Start sending me email.
Time of the meeting in order. Anyone here to offer an implication? Just ask God to be with us as we work through this agenda, help do the best that we can, always be good stewards of this community and those who reside with it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? This time I entertain a motion. Move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Moving on to the discussion agenda, the water conservation plan.
There are commissioners in your packet. It's been for several times now, the water conservation plan, and Jeremy's not with us again tonight. They're actually working on a service line break on Knight Street. So we're gonna go ahead and let him do his thing there. We'll discuss this as much as we can. Did you all have a chance to read through the ordinance and the associated water conservation plan? And do you want to make sure that we're looking at this with the correct lens in light of our events from last week too? So this is intended to address a drought situation that comes on fairly slowly so that we have time to to address different things related to a water shortage. So for example, wanted to call your attention on the ordinance to section twenty-five oh four, different water conservation stages. So the first paragraph talks about the city or the city's designated official can determine that the city's water supply is subject to a shortage of supply. And the governing body determines that there's need for conservation of the city's water resources. They can begin a three-stage water conservation program, starting from a watch to a warning to an emergency. Comparing and contrasting that to last week, we really didn't have that amount of time. In about a matter of four hours, we went from good supply to water emergency stage and that the water levels in our tower went down so quickly that we really needed to implement some mandatory conservation measures at that time. Mainstay pressurized and that helps to avoid a water, well, water advisory, which was great, but supply did decrease. That's why we put out one press release to ask people to conserve, to not do laundry, to not run their dishwasher, to even not shower, just while we held had the wells going to fill that tower back up. So again, as we look at this water conservation plan, thinking of this in terms of a drought situation where we have some loss of water over time. And we're not thinking of just our towers, but we're thinking of our wells and the water tables in our wells. I do want to let you know that we do a really good job of monitoring those wells on a weekly basis where we're reviewing those water tables and reporting them, attracting them over time. And we've been very fortunate that they have held fairly steady. They might fluctuate a little bit seasonally, but we've been very, very fortunate, especially compared to other, other communities around, around Kansas. Something to note here is that if we had to go into a water emergency, as it states in that first paragraph, twenty-five oh four, the governing body would have to declare that emergency in order for that to happen, to implement those measures. So for example, in the case of last week, the reason we're in a special meeting this week is because last week we did not have a quorum. If we don't have a quorum, we can't have the governing body declaring emergency and we can't implement those measures. So again, the lens to look at this is a drought type situation that happens over time. At some point, we maybe wanted to talk about if we need to do something similar for a situation that happened last week, or if we just adapt and go, I'm not real sure. But for the purposes of this plan, this is related to that slow go over time. Does that make sense? Okay. The next area I wanted to call your attention to was section twenty dash five one zero. And this talks about emergency termination, and this gives city officials the ability to terminate water supply to any or all customers depending on if we determine that that termination of water services required to protect the health and safety of the public or any other emergencies required. It sounds really, really harsh in this situation. We did have to do this to a couple of residents last week during that water shortage time. All of our water crews were out working on getting those main breaks under control. The wells were operating to get the towers back up. We were trying to prevent pressure loss in the system to avoid a water advisory. And we had two service line breaks that were flooding yards and flooding into people's basements. So we did send staff out to turn those waters off at the meter to help protect that health, safety situation there. So that would be an example of how that might be used. In, in a drought situation, we may have somebody that's being very defiant after we tell them not to water their lawn or wash their car. Perhaps they have a leak situation with ground shifting. If it's in extremely dry conditions, maybe it's one of our vacant homes that has a service line break and we will go out there and terminate. So I just want to give you some context as far as how that would work. Beyond that, I don't really have anything to call your attention to on the ordinance. Are there any questions on the ordinance? Okay. Go ahead.
Overall, or just on what you just discussed?
Overall, the ordinance?
I have, I mean, just a general question on like what well is well number twenty-one, and then also what is a, a day typically look like? Because based on like these numbers of emergency, what is a normal day, like in the summer? Or winter? I mean, nine hundred thousand gallons is, over that amount is a warning, triggers a warning. So what is a normal day look like?
I need to verify that with Jeremy. I've got six numbers floating in my head. I don't want to tell you wrong, but I will find out what that number is and I can tell you a little bit later.
And then the well that they use to screen, which one is that?
See, eighteen is the one by Filar Park. Is twenty-one, is that the one? I guess now that is that the one over by F and A? That's right. I'll get a map of those wells and I'll send that out to you a little later.
And then my last question would be, so how did, how would this affect like, for instance, in the situation like a car wash? Where that, you know, obviously their business revolves around, or even like a laundry mat or something like that?
So that would be under the class two water types.
Okay.
So under the, I believe it's the water watcher, water warning, we could ask those businesses to stop functioning for a while while we got things under control.
With, with the ordinance in place like that, is there a liability that the city would be taking on in limiting a commercial operation with this, or does, does engaging in ordinance like this with these stated reasons protect us?
Yeah, from a liability standpoint, in this type of a situation where it would be this kind of slow rolling kind of situation where we know where it's coming, you know, we would give them a warning, say, hey, this is what's going on. We are having a water shortage. We would be as insulated from liability as you could be in that type of a situation. Because we're responding to an emergency. It's not like we just shut the water off with no reason. So the reasoning behind it, I think, would be adequate to protect us in a court of law for sure.
The those advocate, I mean, the, the counterpoint would be, does, does this then give the government an ability to say, you know, to, to take on more conservative water restriction methods? And, and who is the government to tell me that I can't do this sort of thing? Does the thresholds that we're setting this ordinance at now, can we continue to whittle those away to where we're just saying, you know, that we're saying that you can't use any water for any purposes other than what we say you should?
I would hope that common sense would prevail in that section, but I know.
I remain tremendously optimistic in common sense. I do.
I think, I think that, that the reason that we put ordinances in place is because we're looking out for the good of the whole. And we're looking at any type of water restriction in this way has to have number one, a valid reason. And number two, it is looked at as a temporary situation. So describe, I think categorizing those water restriction usage from least restrictive, so optional to business oriented, to life and health, safety categories, help us to ratchet down and understand the nature of the good of the whole emergency. If we're pumping sand out of our wells, for example, we're probably gonna say, I'm sorry, you can't wash your car unless you want it to be sand blasted. And the car wash's equipment is probably not gonna want to have sand coming through it. So I think that's where common sense layer comes in. I think we're gonna have to we'll have to educate people as to why we're doing what we're doing, but I think this gives us a framework to start. What we wouldn't want to have happen is for either staff to completely ignore the fact that we would have a drought situation that would necessitate us to put water conservation measures in. We also don't want to not have any kind of a framework and allow staff or the commission to just come in and seize operations immediately. This, this, I think, actually gives the public some protection and some expectation of how we would feel about it if that emergency would arise. So I look at it as a framework, protecting both sides, understanding the good of the whole, not as a tool to be over regulated in a situation.
I certainly hope so. I, I think that it, I think it achieves that as well. I remember growing up where even, even numbered houses were encouraged to water on these days, odd numbers houses were encouraged to water on those days and encouraging to water in the morning as opposed to in the middle of the day. So I mean, I think the idea of water conservation is a good one.
And I think too, if we start here, if we get to a situation where we have to implement these, implementing voluntary first, and I know like I explained this back earlier, we had information coming out about energy conservation being pushed by natural gas and electric power providers during extreme cold measures. The small efforts that we make on a voluntary basis would ask, help us to avoid those mandatory merger measures. So I think if that part comes down to educating the public as well.
That's a good idea.
And it is a new policy anyway, many of that.
I, I haven't heard a single person complain about the restrictions last week. I think by and large, most people understand the need for it and moving employees of it, so.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-two four thirty-two eighteen.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve ordinance twenty-two four thirty-two eighteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on, minutes of January third and January seventeenth meetings.
Move to approve the minutes of the January third and January seventeenth twenty-two four.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve the minutes of January three, January seventeen meetings. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number one.
On, I saw a psyche valve. Is that court mandated? Is that what that would have been from?
That's for hiring of police officers have to go through that and the patches before they can start.
Okay, thank you.
And the city has to have a contractor license?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we got one when we first started. For example, when we built these walls here to create that storage room, we needed a permit and we did the work ourselves using some volunteer labels from the fire department. So we had to have a license to be able to, to do that. And so we keep, maintain our license, two reasons. One, if we have the staff that does any kind of that self-performed work, then we need to make sure that we're following the same rules as everybody else. And number two, it does kind of help us to understand and appreciate the extra effort that general contractors are going through with their efforts to get their continuing education as well.
I think it's great that we hold ourselves on the same standards and the same levels too.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance number one.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve appropriation ordinance number one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to HVAC bids.
There are commissioners, as you probably felt, when you walk in, the lobby is very cold. The restrooms are even colder. The water's not freezing in the toilets yet. I don't think, is that correct, Stacy? We haven't noticed any ice in the toilets yet.
No.
No. Okay, so that's good. New trick. The heat exchanger went out on this unit several weeks ago and we tried to decide what the best route was. We did get an estimate to replace the heat exchanger. It was several thousand dollars. This is a unit that's been in place since nineteen ninety-five. Talked at length with Hoods because they have our maintenance contract for our, our units. They recommended not investing that much money in just the heat exchanger with that old of a unit, recommended replacement. We went out to bid to give every contractor an opportunity to bid on this, bid on this work. We did only receive one bid back and that was from Hoods for thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy dollars for a comparable replacement unit. They expect it to be available within two, two to four weeks after giving them notice to proceed to order the unit. So we would ask for your approval tonight so we can warm our lobby and public restrooms back up.
I move to approve the bid from hood heating and air for for a city hall HVAC unit in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars to pay, paid from CIP.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the bid from hood heating and air for a city hall HVAC unit in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-seven dollars to pay from CIP. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the manager's report.
There are commissioners first. Just wanted to amend all of our staff that were working together so hard on snow removal this last weekend for the water main breaks. I think I emailed you a very lengthy paragraph about the details of work that they did. A special shout out to the water department for thirty-two consecutive hours working to get those brakes under control. I don't think that we've had four simultaneous main brakes in a very long time, if, if ever. Streets department, the public may not have seen them out and about much. They started work very early, midnight, one o'clock in the morning, a couple of times. Went home, slept for a while, came back out about four o'clock in the afternoon to start again. So it was, it was chopped up days, but they did a really nice job. And then Shelby Hangin is one of our, our city mechanic. We don't often talk a lot about him. And he's under the public works department, but he serves all departments to make sure that everybody is, is, has their vehicles and equipment in operation. We did have a couple pieces of equipment freeze up, but he was able to get them thawed out and back into working order. So parks too. So then they get left behind. As far as talking about the streets and snow removal, but then you can take care of all the public sidewalks around city, city facilities and all the area here around city hall. I take care of, personally, where else it is.
Parking lots. And main salt, ready.
All the downtown public parking lots, which you guys take care of. So a lot of extra work. Some people ask about snow removal downtown. We pile it up in the middle, then we wait for business to get done for the day. We come back in the evening when the cars are gone and use the snow blower to put that back in. Sometimes the snow melts or freezes, doesn't work for the snow blowers. We have to scoop it up. So it's usually a two-stage process. The other thing is that it was just announced today, you might have seen the press release on, across Kansas is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. And this year the tour will, they will stop in Concordia and stay overnight. So that's kind of a neat effort and an honor to be able to host them on a special tour. They'll be using the high school facility and the gym to stay overnight. Been visiting a little bit with tourism partners to make sure that we have plenty of things for them to do. Expect about eight hundred riders and probably forty to fifty staff to help them out. So it'd be a huge convergence of the community during that time. Again, we'll try to put up the information about what else is planned for them as the event gets closer, but very excited to host them this year. And then finally, we did receive a total of fourteen applicants for our public, applications for public works director position, which was amazing. Five very strong candidates that made it to the first round of interviews and we held those last Thursday. And we narrowed that field down to three candidates that'll join us on Friday for an all-day intense interview process. And hopefully from there, we'll have one that'll rise to the top and we can make an offer too. I'm very impressed with the strong folk candidates. So I'm very excited to have them forward. Any questions?
Staff reports?
I just want to let the commissioner know that I have full staff. I lost the role in this part, so I'm pretty excited.
What are you gonna do with all your free time?
Yeah.
I just wanted to run up the year end for the twenty twenty-three of all the rec and park stuff we had going on. I ran the numbers for all our rec programming and everything that's been registered through our site for as far as participants wise. We had over eleven hundred participants across the whole year, all our different programs. And while I was sitting there, I realized that's not counting probably another ten to fifteen teams in football and volleyball that are from out of town that signed or came here to play as a team. So that's basically another hundred or more kids on top of that too. So that spanned across twenty-seven different programs that were ran this past year. So it was a pretty good turnout. He may have asked how that compared to previous years. And all the programs that stay the same, they're always give or take, maybe ten kids. Five to ten kids or so like that. Then like basketballs, we made some changes and playgrounds, since we had to make some changes too. Those numbers usually drop when big changes occur, but like basketball camps this year, they were backed up again too. So look forward to the other summer of continually increase that. Like I told you earlier in the fall, the smores of movie night, we had over close to a hundred participants in that as well. And another thing about the recreation, we were able to host some postseason events at the ball field this year. Both the Pee Wee District and State tournaments were held in Concordia. The K-Team Regional, the Legion State, which was a big event this year, was the first time we hosted and brought a lot of people to town. And back in the spring, Cloud hosted their postseason first round as well. So a lot of good postseason action at the ball fields. Pleasant Hill Cemetery. I don't know if we're proud to say it, but we had thirty-four burials out there this year. It's less than what we had the year before. That's a good point, but I think the year before we had over fifty. So it was a very busy year in twenty twenty-two Pleasant Hill. But now I don't know if we ever gave a pool update. Stacy and I were trying to think if we did or not. I ran the numbers from this last season and total entries in the pool, we had over eleven thousand people in the pool this year. So that's a, that's a good number, about a hundred and eighty a day. So the one thing we noticed was it didn't drop off as much in July when it gets really hot out. Usually those numbers drop off a little bit, but it was a little bit more sustained this year. So it's also good thanks to the lack of participation and the entries at the pool. So any other questions? Finally, parts interact?
Commissioner comments?
Well, I'm like, I think we want to thank the staff for all the hard work. And it's the cold weather, I guess. You think about being wet and cold at the same time.
Jeremy did discover they need to order some new waders, so those arrived by then.
Well, I would echo what Marcia said. I'm sorry, kind of not really that I wasn't here to make sure we had all the fun, but the emails that I was getting were noteworthy. So anyway, I hope that doesn't happen again. I just, I can't even imagine what it was like for those guys. I went out and scooped my, well, I was trying to get my car in the garage. I didn't scoop anything except what I had to. And I was freezing and I didn't have gloves on. I didn't have gloves on. I couldn't believe how cold I got. I can't even imagine being wet and cold. Can't even imagine for hours. So they are my heroes.
Also echo the appreciation of the amount of the cold and conditions and also getting the streets cleared off.
Yeah, g'day there. And then also Chris, thanks for everything. Hey, we are frequent flyers of your programs. And it's just so great to be in a town where so much is offered and it's easy to participate and it's, it's pretty wonderful.
You know, I think when something really good happens here, or when something really hard happens here, the outcome is usually the same in that feel pretty fortunate to be a part of this community. And I was talking with somebody today that's not, that doesn't live in this community, but is here often and commented, they recently made a transition in their medical care and how, how impressed they are with the care that they receive here, the, the care coordination. And, and really led into a broader conversation of what a bright spot Concordia is as a whole. And, and I think that it's, it's not a surprise, but it's always nice to hear that. And just validation, when you see community members chipping in, different commercial partners chipping in where they can. I mean, that it really is just a pretty remarkable community and I think we, we sometimes don't see that as much because we're immersed in it or doing the work of it, but pretty fortunate to be here. At this time, we move on to executive session. We entertain a motion.
Move with the city commission recess to executive session for the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real estate exception KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen three-six with Amy Wang and Justin Farrell, the tenants, at a reconvene in the city commission chamber. It's five oh, or six oh four, six oh five.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to recess into executive session. Please inform the reason. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion.
No action was taken.
Okay. Well, then now I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum to the development agreement for infill property as it relates to fifteen acres. So I can.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the addendum for the infill development stated. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the city commission meeting.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn the meeting. If there is further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. At this time, I would like to call to order the Concordia land bank meeting. Open it up for public comments. Do we have a similar audience? Hearing no comments, moving on to new business. Approval of the minutes of January eighteenth, April fifth, July nineteenth, and August sixteenth, two thousand three.
I don't know if I'm allowed to make a motion. I don't think so, but I wanted to point out on the minutes of the August sixteenth meeting regarding the transfer of Highland Drive. The statement is that the city purchased the property at eleven hundred Highland Drive and I'd like to ask that that be amended to Claude County Health Center donated the property at eleven hundred Highland Drive that the city would ask for that amendment.
Second.
So move by Commissioner Hutchinson, seconded by a commission member, sorry, Jackson to amend the August sixteenth minutes to clarify the land acquisition. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And so that's approved, that approved the minutes, right? That approved the addendum to the minutes.
Sure, I, I would have made my statement if you guys were willing to accept the amended motion to approve them minutes as amended by strictly that sentence around.
Yes. Keeper of, keeper of all things right. Discussion of the annual report.
Annual report is listed in your packet. We have been doing a lot of work this last year related that impacts the land bank. No receipts and no disbursements happened in twenty twenty-three, and that's because our land bank holds any funds. So if you recall this last year, as we had a lot of land transactions with the land bank, we would move property from the land bank to the city and then sell it to an owner. Or we would move property from a seller to the city and then to the land, land bank. And that's because the land bank doesn't have its own bank account. It doesn't hold any funds. So all that has to flow through the city first. The reason we put property in the land bank is to have it in a, so it doesn't accrue property tax assessments, meaning that we don't have to, the city wouldn't then have to pay, use public funds to pay property taxes when we're trying to turn it around for economic development purposes and get it back on the tax rolls. So land bank is an economic development tool. We did have several transactions. We did sell two lots on East Second Street. We sold those to, if you recall, the people living at seven twenty State Street, we needed a lot for the We sold those to, uh, if you recall, the, um, people living at seven twenty State Street needed a lot for their mobile home. I don't believe that that's, uh, come to fruition yet, but I know Bruno is still staying in, in contact with them. Um, they had to do some flood plain development work ahead of time to get some foundation work done first. We did acquire two properties, the one at eleven hundred Highland, Highland Drive, uh, which is where the St. Joe subdivision is going to go, and the adjacent property at eight, eight thirty West Eleventh, which is a former St. Mary's building, and it is, um, under demolition right now, going very slowly, but progress has been made. Inventory is listed below that, there's a track, uh, Kansas Military Board Track bordering Airport Drive, so that's immediately west of the Armory. One oh four Lincoln, a couple lots on Block one ninety-nine, and so that's on the north end of the biodock. Lots one and two of Block A, call it Track Park, those are a lot south of the vacant lot, south of Taco John's. And it, uh, the eight thirty West Eleventh and eleven hundred Highland Drive are both on there as well, current inventory. Are there any questions or amendments?
Move to accepting annual report. Second.
Move by Commissioner, uh, Member Hutchinson, and second by Member Jackson to accept the two thousand twenty-three annual report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Concordia Land Bank meeting.
So move to adjourn the Concordia Land Bank meeting?
Move by Commissioner Member Ash, second by Member Wentz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes.